Welcome, everyone. I would like to call to order the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall, council chambers located at 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, January the 28th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Please give us wisdom, patience, grace, and clarity as we go about our city's business. In Jesus' name we always pray. Amen. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to establish a quorum. If I can have a roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Burson here.
Foster here.
We have a quorum. Before I go any farther, I'd like to acknowledge some of our distinguished guests. Roy Key, the President of our EDC, is here. Keith Bond, our Vice President of our EDC. Gary Damiano, the Secretary of the EDC. Kate Weller, our Planning and Zoning Chair. Monica Damiano, Parks Board. Keith Stevens, Police Chief. Lisa Matthews, also with the EDC. and Renetta Burson with the Parks Board. Citizens' comments. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-007, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes, and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recitation of existing policy, or a direction to staff for follow-up. I have some requests. I just want to double-check with everyone. Cindy Key, you would like to speak during 7:00 H., is that correct? Gary Damiano, you would also like to speak before 7:00 H., correct? Roy Key before 7:00 H., correct? David Cheek before 8:00 A., is that correct? And 8:00 D. will be Linda Rigo, is that correct? Right. Thank you. Perfect. All right, great. All right, consent agenda. 6A. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following report, the December 17th, 2024, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the December 17th, 2024, meeting minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Vote for my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Non-agenda passes. New business. 7A. Presentation of quarterly department reports, including first report from our City Secretary, Janet Dillard, and then second, our City Treasurer, Mickey Rainey.
Thank you, Mayor. Here is a quick view of board meetings held in the past three months, as well as board vacancies. As you can see, we have vacancies on all of our boards. Staff is putting together a recruitment campaign for volunteers, as I know it, that will be coming out soon. So if you are interested or know someone who might be interested in volunteering, be on the lookout for this. Also, check out our website, or feel free to contact me directly. I'm happy to help. A few activities over the past couple of months include our code update. All ordinances through December 2024 are now available online. The supplement update is also on your agenda tonight for consideration. And then we do have an upcoming general election for the election of three City Council members that'll take place Saturday, May 3rd, 2025. And then also on your agenda tonight is an ordinance calling our general election, as well as an agreement with Henderson County to conduct elections. Both early and Election Day voting will be held here at City Hall, and the filing period ends Friday, February 14th, at 5:00. So I encourage anyone who is interested in learning more about our elections or filing for a seat to visit our website or contact me. Sorry. And then, of course, I wouldn't want to end this presentation without a little fun. December is always a wild and busy month, but it's also filled with a lot of joy. So something new that I had the privilege of participating in. Sorry, I can't catch my breath. This year is central elementary Christmas storybook reading. So there I am with Ms. Toop's fourth-grade class. This was really special and super fun, and it also reminded me how much I like my quiet office here at City Hall. That's all I have for you.
Questions for staff?
Question. How far back do the records go that we're uploading on the new system? One time, our ordinances and minutes went back many years, and to the day, they only went back to 2020. Is that going to be, are we going to be able to go back further than that?
Are you talking city ordinance codifications?
Well, I think ordinance minutes as well. The minutes, I think, on the new system only go back to 2020.
That is correct.
Can we go back further than that?
So staff is actually looking into that. When we switched over from our other agenda software, we no longer have the capability of uploading minutes. They're uploaded during or with the agendas. So you would have to go to the specific meeting you want. But staff is looking for a way and discussing with Civic Plus that they could be uploaded by year moving forward. And the only way to get them from previous is to just upload them, which would be a task, but possible.
Oh, how are these, how do we find anything if we're just looking for something or a keyword? How does, how would that work?
Well, the way it used to work is we did have the opportunity to search for it in minutes with American Legal. We don't have that with Civic Plus, but like I said, we are looking into it.
When will we know something?
I have not heard back, but I keep harassing them. So as soon as I do, I will follow up with Angie.
Thank you.
Further questions?
That's a question. But if they want them, can't they do an Opens Meeting Records Act for those particular meetings, correct?
Absolutely.
So you have them somewhere, they're just not going to be on the website?
Oh, that is a permanent record. We have every set of minutes as far back as 69.
Well, it's not always easy to know back to 69 what minute you're looking for. So by keyword on a computer, it makes a much more efficient system.
I agree.
All right, no further questions. Our next quarterly department report will be from our City Treasurer, Mickey Rainey.
This is going to be my financial report for fiscal year 2025, quarter ending December 31st, 2024. The city has completed 25 or three out of the 12 months of fiscal year 2025, as of December 31st, 2024. And as you can see with the two pie charts, we are right on track with that. The revenue highlights. Our sales tax is down 1.5%. Not a big deal. Business franchise fees have increased due to the annual payments from Encore and East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply. Alarm permits have increased due to enforcement from the PD. Fines and penalties have increased. We've received the first draw from the Texas CDBG Longleaf Grant, and our revenue total is at 30.74%. Again, we should be at 25, so we are going in the right direction. This is the sales tax annual comparison. As you can see, all of the months are up, with the exception of October, but we knew that was coming. There was an anomal, anonymously, anonymously.
Anomaly.
Yes, that. And our September numbers, and that number was much higher, so we checked into it and found that one of our larger taxpayers had submitted their tax returns early. So we received those monies in September, so we knew our October number would be down, but we're still good. Expense highlights, these are all of the departments in the general fund. Total expense is at 32.07%. It's a little high, but we purchased some major equipment, which I'm going to show you They started the remodel on the courts. We purchased three police vehicles. We purchased the Ferris mower for the streets and the Ferris mower for the parks. Those are normally items that we would purchase later on in the budget, but council wanted these cars, so we purchased them in October. In personnel and open positions, we have new hires. This is, of course, through fourth quarter. We have new hires, Police Officer Billy Ratliff and a part-time groundskeeper, Dennis Weaver. Open positions, as of fourth quarter, we had four police officer positions and one police lieutenant position that has changed, and I'll report that in the next quarter. We've been doing some fun things with our insurance. We're kicking off our TML Employee Incentive Program, which offers each employee that participates a $150 incentive check. This program will also help decrease insurance premiums and/or help with raising costs. The first program is called Good for the Souls, which is a group challenge to move your body and practice self-reflection for 30 minutes a day. We had our first meeting today, and I'm hoping we can get some employees involved. We're going to try to have some fun with it. For our audit, we've started our annual audit process. Donald Almond will be here February 12th and 13th to complete the fieldwork, and we completed the workers' comp audit through TML Insurance in December. The reports that I have for you to approve is a bank ballots report, the budget report October through December, the budget summary report, and the special funds report. And to note, all of my monthly reports are added to the website under the City Treasurer tab. If you go to gunbarrelcity.gov, go to City Treasurer, hit Financial, you can see all of my reports. Questions?
Questions for staff? If none, great job.
Out of the park.
Thank you, Ms. Rainey.
Ooh, thank you.
7B. We will consider and take action to approve the fiscal year 2024, 2025, financial report for the first quarter as just laid out by our City Treasurer, Mickey Rainey. Do I have a motion?
Move that we consider to take action to approve the FY 2425 financial report for the first quarter.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evans, second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a vote from my left, please?
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 7C. Consider and take action to approve the 2025 City Council meeting schedule. Speaking on this will be our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
This year, instead of at every meeting deciding if we need to move the next meeting, like we have done in the past, staff put together an annual calendar. We already did this for our P&amp;Z, based on some middle dates and such. And so this year, we added everybody's meeting dates to that. So on each agenda for each board and commission, and now City Council, we are proposing, we set those dates now, and then we, everybody knows what they are for the rest of the year going forward. The calendar, you see there on the screen in front of you, what we did is if it was typically, we move it one week forward. Last year, in the last 12 months, if we've done that, we did that again here. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve this calendar as proposed. Janet also has a couple of dates on there that she had to add for the elections. That just keeps this from being an agenda item in March, to set the date for April, and in April, to set the date for May. So we just did a full-year calendar and figured that would be easier, not only for our council, for staff, and also for our public to know when our meetings are going to be held. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? If none, we will move on. 7C. Consider and take action to approve the 2025 City Council meeting schedule. Do I have a motion?
I move that we consider, we take action to approve the 2025 City Council meeting schedule.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Burson.
I have a motion and a second. May I have any?
Other discussion on this?
If there's none, we will take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes. Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 7D. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number O-2025-001, calling a general election for May 3rd, 2025, to elect the following positions. Council Place 1, which is on the east side. Council Place 3, which is on the west side. And Council Place 5, which is an at-large position to three-year terms each. I will read into the record the ordinance. Ordinance number O-2025-001, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, calling a general election for the election of three City Council members to three-year terms each for May 3rd, 2025, and establishing procedures for such general election. Our sponsor on this, again, is our City Secretary, Janet Dillard.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet is an ordinance calling our general election to fill the offices of Place 1, 3, and 5. This will be our first election with council members serving three-year terms. The filing period is currently open, and the deadline is February 14th. I do want to make mention that I have spoken to our elections administrator regarding polling places, and moving forward, if the city holds a city election, we will have early voting and Election Day voting here at City Hall. They can't guarantee that be the case if we're not holding an election, but they're going to do their best to try. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for staff? If none, do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance number O-2025-001, calling for a general election for May 3rd, 2025, to elect the following positions. Council Place 1, East. Council Place 3, West. And Council Place 5, at-large, to two, three-year terms each.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. We'll have a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 7E. We will consider and take action to approve an interlocal agreement with the Henderson County to conduct this city's May 3rd, 2025, general election. Again, the sponsor on this item will be our City Secretary, Janet Dillard.
Thank you. Also included in your packet is an interlocal agreement with Henderson County. The estimated cost currently stands at about $3,500. This can change if another entity holds a joint election with us, or of course, if we're able to cancel it altogether. Something that many people might not know is that a few years ago, the city opted to purchase our own voting machines instead of renting them from the county. And although this was a little bit of a lump sum upfront, it's definitely paid off in cutting our election costs by more than half each year. Also, another cost saver will be that we won't have a city election moving forward every third year because of the three-year terms now. So this agreement, once approved by us, will be put forth to the County Commissioners Court at their next meeting.
Questions for staff? If none, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Henderson County to conduct the city's May 3rd, 2025, general election.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, we'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes. Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving to our next item will be 7F. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number O-2025-002, adopting Supplement 1, update number 2 to the Code of Ordinances. I will read into the record the ordinance. Ordinance number O-2025-002, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, and declaring an emergency. Our sponsor on this item, again, will be our City Secretary, Janet Dillard.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, this ordinance is adopting a second update to Supplement Number 1, because each supplement contains two updates per year. So this update encompasses July through December adopted ordinances.
Questions for staff?
Is that the emergency?
It is not an emergency, and since you brought that up, I did follow up on Councilwoman Burns' question regarding this last time. For whatever reason, we've included this in our codification ordinances in the past, and typically, ordinances sometimes declare this to enable immediate action, for whatever reason. It's not required, but it is in this ordinance the way it is presented tonight.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we probably will remove that, just so you're aware.
Further discussion?
Move that we adopt ordinance number 02025002, adopting-
I haven't asked for a motion yet, but thank you very much, Mr. Foster. If no other further discussion, I will ask for a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number O-2025-002, adopting Supplement 1, update number 2 to the Code of Ordinances.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes. Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 7G. Consider and take action to award bids for the 2025 street materials. Our sponsor on this item will be our Street Superintendent, Mike Howell.
Good evening, Council, and everyone. Each year, the Gunbarrel City bids out street supply and material services. This year, we had five RFP-submitted requests for proposals. The chart on the next slide shows who those vendors are and their bids. We take the lowest bid and approve that vendor for the year. This year, we're also asking council to approve an approximate amount we'll be spending, we will spend with each vendor, and this can be done in one action from council recommending approval of all recommended vendors at the amount submitted for the amount requested. As you can see on the chart up there, those that are highlighted in green are the vendors that were awarded, that won the bids. And you'll see the circle under "Bar None" there for chip cereal installed. That should be 57 cents per shot, instead of $57 a shot. That payment contractor could retire at $57 a shot, so we made, I made a misprint on that. And I'm asking for $300,000 for chip ceiling roads this year. I have about 11 miles, okay? Not all vendors on the bid won all the supplies and projects, so you'll see King Sand and Gravel as mostly our base material, our base rock, sand for the, for the parks, and you'll see the compressed granite, the crushed granite that we use on the walkways in the park for the, for the walking trails, and also the playground sand where it's needed, okay? RK Hall on the end over there is our main vendor for hot asphalt mix when we need it, and also our coal mix for patching the streets. And where we intend to spend was King Sand and Gravel and RK Hall, not to exceed $20,000 on each of those materials that we need for the year. So are any questions from council, or?
Questions for staff?
Mike, what will be accomplished on the walking trails with this bid?
Well, we're still putting together a plan to do the walking trails. I haven't, I've spoken to a couple of contractors, and I'm still waiting on a couple of proposals from them on doing either compressed granite, the compressed granite decomposed. The decomposed granite, instead of crushed granite, is a lot better than the crushed granite, because the crushed granite doesn't stay in place like the decomposed granite does. And the decomposed granite comes out of South Texas, down in the Austin area, where there's a lot of it. But none of them around here have very much decomposed granite, so it's kind of hard to find. But I do have some different proposals that we're looking at on the walking trails. I also have a contractor going to give me a bid for paving the whole thing. We can asphalt it, or it could be also concrete. We have a concrete company that is going to give me a proposal to see about, but that'll be later on, and as soon as we find out something, we'll let staff know, and Angie, and then we can move on from there.
But we do anticipate work on that this fiscal year.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, Mike. You guys do a great job. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
So do I have a motion?
I move that we award the bids for the 2025 street materials as suggested by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Jacobs, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, we'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Foster, yes. Burson, yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is 7H. Consider and take action on amending performance agreement date for retail and dining for Project 334. We have citizens' comments. Before our sponsor, Mr. Burson, gets started, our first citizens' comments will be Cindy
Hi, I'm Cindy Key, 312 Canoe Court. Our city is almost completely supported by sales tax. There have been a lot of delays by council of completing projects. I respectfully request that council move forward with pending projects without further delay, and I also request that council be mindful of the oath that they take in front of all of us, that they will represent the city first before their own special interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Key. Our next speaker on this item will be Gary Damiano.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm speaking here today as the Secretary of the Economic Development Corporation and as a private citizen. Just as a reminder to the City Council, the issue on your plate right now is the Scribner's error, nothing more, nothing less. Historically, on January 6th, Angie kicked out an email to the City Council members and to the EDC, laying out the problem, well-d documenting it, well-written email. It also provided a solution to the problem, supported by our attorney. I will start, I will jump ahead and say that solution has been implemented, and thank you very much. This problem is an EDC problem. It's an EDC administrative problem. It's the EDC's problem to resolve. And as I said earlier, the EDC- And as I said earlier, the EDC has done that. The, I apologize. I'll reiterate, the current status of this problem, the Scrivener's error, has been resolved, according to the way our attorney suggested and according to the way Angie suggested. Where we are today. This performance agreement between Pier 334 and the EDC is a concluded agreement. It's a good agreement. Everyone is functioning according to the agreement, and the project is going well. As if you drive by the project, you'll see that the seawall has been fixed. Dirt is being moved. Everything is going well. And I encourage the city council not to interfere with this. What I also encourage the city council to do is make a motion to simply state that this is a non-issue, that the, and no action should be required on this. At the conclusion of this project, what you're going to see is you're going to have a great entrance to Gunbarrel City. You're going to have a facility that offers opportunities for visitors to come and stay and enjoy Cedar Creek Lake. You're going to have a place where events can be held. You're going to have increased sales tax. There's a lot of benefit to this property. You have an opportunity to do the right thing on this, to just pass this all back to the EDC. Let us handle what we're supposed to handle. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Damiano. Our next speaker will be Roy Key.
Mr. Mayor, city council, there are some documents that have been given to Janet to share with you guys that are ready reference to maybe help you along with what I've got to say. And probably would have been helpful when Mr. Damiano was speaking. I don't want to take the time to rehash the horse, but I am here as a citizen, and I'm here as a president of the EDC. I understand that there are some questions about other issues in the agreement for dates, and that was something that was just brought to my attention. If you look at the documents that I've given you, we've talked about an email dated the 23rd of December that sets forth how our attorney recommended we handle this. And then on January the 26th will be the next one in your packet that, once again, was sent by the city manager to the EDC and to the council as a whole, discussing how this should be handled for a Scrivener's error. The Scrivener's error, allow me to point out that it is a very simple, completely separate subset. It has nothing to do with the overall project duration. It has nothing to do with the overall project cost. It merely is correcting an error that the face of the document itself specifically states, and if you'll go over and look at the very last email in that package, that'll also give you some help in looking at it, that specifically states that a certificate of occupancy would be placed in, in place by March the 15th. But those other dates specifically say that the hotel, you'll have to excuse me, I'm having a little trouble this evening. The hotel itself and the parking lot and the rest of it will be built at a different date. So in essence, what we've got is an error that says we're going to get a certificate of occupancy for something that has not come to fruition to build. It's not there to occupy. And that's where the Scrivener's error came in. As I said, it's a very defined set of issues. It's limited, the Scrivener's error is limited to that March 15, 2025 date for the certificate of occupancy. It doesn't reach out and approach anything else. Whatever the city decides, which is surely in its ambit, the council decides, which is surely in its ambit about the rest of it. Whatever you decide is what we have to live with. I ask, though, that you just adopt what we've done, and we've made the correction and changed the.
Thank you, Ms. Key. Our last speaker on this item will be Stephen Haynes.
And it would be the first, the first two, the first. You won't be able to see what I'm talking about, but it was just pretty pictures. So I was here to give you an update on the Pier 334 project. Give me one second. So we started off with a pretty picture of the hotel that you guys are all aware of already. The second picture was a picture of the work that's being done so far on the seawall. Both sides are done now, and I'm not sure if you saw, but they put in the framing today for the eight-foot walkway that goes around the water. And that's the promenade, that should be done by the end of this week. The next pretty picture was a pool deck. Hilton puts their mark on everything. So we decided to put in a 35-foot pool that's 18 feet wide, fairly small, not diveable, but for basically wading in. And the concept that they, we had a bigger pool to start with. They asked us to make it smaller so that when you see the pretty picture of the hotel, you walk out of the big main doors that are across from the banquet rooms, you're able to walk out to a very large area where we could put tents and/or some other kinds of things to do so you can have an outside space with a small pool as opposed to a big pool in a small space. So that's what we agreed to do. Then we terraced below the pool all the way down to the water, so the amphitheater now is going to be four times as big. So it'll look very much like the, an end zone like the University of Georgia, when you see on TV where everyone sits on the grass. Be able to sit on the grass and look at the amphitheater down at the bottom, with the stage down at the bottom on the water. The next thing that we did was, we had to pick, as the last time we were here, we showed you all the rooms and all of the architecture that was finished. This pass with Hilton was literally every piece of carpet, wall covering, fabric on the furniture and the furniture. I will get this to all of you so you can see it. It's maybe 10 or 12 slides. But every room has got color-coded. It's the swatch of the cloth, the color of the walls, and everything else you needed. So you can see that the hotel is now complete. And we will have our architectural, our construction drawings done by the first and submitted to Shannon for permitting to start the process. And then what you'll see next is that the cement coping will be done this week. The balance of the demolition of all the rest of the concrete pads will be done the next 10 or 12 days. We'll be hauling all the concrete out and about 500 loads of dirt. So if anybody would like some dirt, we have some really nice dirt we have to get rid of. The construction documents will be passed on to the city in a couple of days. Once all of the other concrete, the concrete is picked up or removed, we'll start the grading and the underground utilities. The bids are all in, everything has been accepted. And then right after that, we will be pouring foundations. And just for your edification, as of today, we're about $1,004,000 in. And when we're done with moving the concrete and pouring the foundations, getting this dirt work done, we'll be at $2.2 million invested. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Again, our sponsor on this will be Councilman Burson. Mr. Burson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, the reason I put it on the agenda, to be clear, is I was told that this would not be coming before council for, for a, I asked if it was going to, after the Scrivener's error, Scrivener's error was put on there, if it was coming back to council, and my answer was no. Reading through the document, I felt that it needed to be done. With all that said, I agree. I have, I think, all the issues that we had as far as the dates, the agreements with employment, and all that stuff needs to be cleaned up. The document needs to be cleaned up and sent back to the EDC through them and the attorney, and getting all the appropriate signatures. Send it back to council for their approval. And that's basically why I brought it to council, because I was told it wasn't coming back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Any further discussion?
Question? I just have a question regarding the overall performance agreement itself. Do we know who developed and put this together? I see the attorney promptly mentioned about the Scrivener's error, but there was also signatures on his performance agreement or his signature, and I see no city attorney signatures on any of these agreements. So I'm just trying to confirm, did city, was the city, was your EDC attorney involved in writing this agreement, or was someone else possibly do it?
Mr. Foster, I did ask our EDC attorney, Jeff Moore. He did draft it. It did not come back to him for a signature, although there is a signature line on the agreement. He and I have chatted about that to ensure that any future amendments are fully executed before they come back to city council for approval. And that Stephen and I have also spoken, and will make sure that any future amended amendments to the agreement come back fully executed with the president. They're notarized. The secretary, I think it's either the secretary or the vice president, also signs it notarized, and the EDC attorney signs the document as well.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Well, on this motion, can we make a motion to send it back to the EDC? Or is, are we just working with the date?
You can.
We are strictly dealing with the amended performance agreement date for retail and dining only.
But I believe the EDC is working on that.
You can, council, make a motion to send it back to the EDC for, to amend the date, and, or any dates, and then do that. I did send council and the EDC a drafted First Amendment to this agreement earlier in the week. The attorney and I, and Mr. Haynes and I, through the weekend, worked on, looking at all the dates, because there are a few other dates in the agreement that need to be amended as well with all the different drafts, so.
May I, may I read what, I would like to make a motion. I'm not making the motion, I'd just like to read it aloud. Is that doable?
Go ahead.
I just would like to make a motion to hand this so everybody can hear it. I would, I make a motion, we hand this amended and restated performance agreement back to the EDC Board of Directors for review on all the dates and make sure that the work, that they work together, and then resubmit a fully executive, executable second amended and restated agreement with all the required performance dates amended back to the city council at the February meeting. That is how I would like to state that.
Are you making a motion or?
No, I'm not. I just wanted y'all to hear it. And if they open the floor up, that's what I would like to make a motion for.
Well, you need to make that motion then. I mean, you know what you want to say, and I agree with you. I don't have any problem with them changing the date. And I did look at all the videos, and they're right. I mean, it should have been done correct two or three years ago.
Are all the actions being taken in this area now, Angie?
I'm sorry?
Are these actions that were mentioned being taken now?
What?
Going back and reviewing the dates and cleaning it up and?
Yes, sir. The EDC, we are already working on that. I have a draft that I sent to all of city council and all of the EDC this, earlier this week. Like I said, it would be a First Amendment to the amended performance agreement. There's a lot of words in there, but it's the First Amendment to. And the goal is to clean up all the dates. There is a couple of different dates, there's a couple of different numbers of reports. But it is, it is central to the dates being in line throughout the contract.
I agree.
Well, I think we should codify that with a motion. And if, since you're doing it anyway, the council approved it, I think we should approve it with a vote and move on.
I would say we can have a motion as long as, again, we are, as a point of order, we understand we're only talking about dates here.
Right.
Okay.
That is correct.
I remember that we approved the Scrivener's date as corrected.
I don't think we need to approve the Scrivener's error.
I think, I think that the way I have it written in this, I asked for how to write it up. I would like to make a motion that we hand this amended and restated performance agreement back to the EDC Board of Directors to review all the dates and make sure they work together, and then resubmit a fully executed second amended amendment and restated agreement with all the required performance dates amended back to the city coun, and then amended right back to the city council at the February meeting with their appropriate signatures.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Evan's second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote from my left.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacob's yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving to planning and zoning. 8A. There'll be a public hearing on a request to rezon track 17D1, 17D, and 17 in the GT Walter survey. A 794 in the city of Gunbarrel City being described as all-of-called 14.63 acre tract of land, described indeed as 606 East Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, belonging to Rizvi Sayed Nasir Ali from General Business District B2 and Agriculture AG to single-family detached residential R5. I now open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this? Yes? Yep. All right, David Cheek, you'll be our first speaker on this.
I just have a concern with that property backing up to my property. I'm concerned with the stormwater drainage, how that's going to be handled, you know? Will it have that in the design? We all have stormwater to drain that off, and it's not going to be coming over onto our properties on the other side? And, you know, I was wanting to know, you know, how many homes are going to be built back there? I'm assuming this has already been approved, and it's already into developing. I was just concerned with what the duration will be for all the construction. Will the streets have curb gutters? It's just basically, I'm mostly just concerned about the drainage and not, and they've just dumped over onto our property.
Thank you. Anyone else? We now close the public hearing. 8B. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number O-2025-003, rezoning track 17D1, 17D, and 17 in the GT Walter survey. A-794 in the city of Gunbarrel City being described as all-of-called 14.63 acre tract of land, described indeed as 606 East Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, belonging to Rizvi Sayed Nasir Ali from General Business District B2 and Agriculture AG to single-family detached residential R- from General Business District B2 and Agriculture AG to Single Family Detached Residential R5. I will read into the record the ordinance number, ordinance number O-2025-003, an ordinance of the city council for the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas, rezoning property within the Gunbarrel City city limits, amending the city's comprehensive plan and zoning map, providing severability, providing a repealer clause, providing a penalty, and providing an effective date. Our sponsor on this item will be our city planner, Brittany Lewis.
Good evening. So first, we're going to start off with, we received the application on November 15th of 2024. Public hearing notice was sent to the paper on December the 17th. Letters mailed to the property owners within 200 feet of the property on January the 7th. Public hearing notice was published in the paper for the planning and zoning and city council meeting on January the 9th, which is at least 15 days prior to the city council meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission made recommendation on January 13th, and tonight is the regular city council meeting. This is the 200-foot boundary. It's outlined in blue, and the property is highlighted in yellow. I sent out 22 letters and received zero in response. This is located at 606 East Main Street. Here's the view of the location from the street. It's important to note that part of this property is currently zoned B2, a commercial district, even though a residential home has been established on the property. The developer is requesting a rezoning of the property to R5 to bring the zoning into alignment with the current residential use. This zoning, this rezoning request will help ensure that the property remains in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance while maintaining its residential character. Here's a brief overview of the Single Family Detached Residential District, or R5 zoning designation. This district is designed to support very high-density residential development on smaller lots. It encourages efficient land use, stabilizes the character of existing neighborhoods, and ensures the future developments are located where public services and infrastructure can support them. In terms of permitted uses, R5 allows single-family detached homes built on-site. Accessory structures like garages, carports, and swimming pools are also permitted. By special exception, certain uses like churches, daycares, utility services, and recreational facilities may be approved if they align with the residential nature of the district. For dimension requirements, R5 lots must be at least 4,500 square feet in size, with a minimum width of 45 feet and a depth of 90 feet. Buildings must have at least 1,050 square feet of floor space and cannot exceed 35 feet in height. With a total lot coverage capped at 45%, there are also specific setback requirements for front, side, and rear yards to ensure adequate spacing between structures. Accessory structures have their own set of limitations, including size, height, and placement. For example, accessory buildings cannot exceed 50% of the main structure's interior square footage, and they must meet setback requirements, except for certain allowances in rear yards. Additionally, all homes in this district must include one-car garage or carport with a minimum 12-foot-wide hard-surface driveway. Finally, it's important to note that the general district regulations also apply to R5 zoning to ensure consistency and compatibility across developments. This zoning designation provides a balanced approach to maximizing land use while maintaining a high standard of livability in a residential areas. Let's take a closer look at the zoning around the property being considered for rezoning. To the west, the property is bordered by R1 Residential in blue and R2 Residential in green zones. These areas are primary low to moderate-density, single-family residential neighborhoods, which provides stability and a sense of community. To the south, we have B2 Business District in red, which is designed to support retail office spaces and other commercial activities. This district brings economic vibrancy and offers a range of services and amenities to nearby residents. The zoning configuration highlights a clear mix of residential and commercial uses. The nearest to both residential neighborhoods and business district highlights the importance of ensuring that the proposed rezoning aligns with the character and needs of the surrounding areas. The balance between these zones allows residential living while ensuring convenient access to essential goods and services. As we move forward, it's important to consider how this proposed change integrates with the surrounding context while fostering compatibility and sustainable growth. They're asking to be rezoned R5 because their intent is to build workforce housing, housing units that are designed to live in by our professional workers in Gunbarrel, like teachers, police officers, and frontline professionals. Zoning is a critical tool for implementing the goals of the comprehensive plan. Proposed rezoning decisions are evaluated for alignment with the vision and focus areas outlined in the plan. On this slide, we can see a comparison of the existing land use on the left and future land use on the right for the area being considered for rezoning. Starting with the existing land use, the current zoning reflects the existing development patterns, which may include residential, commercial, or open spaces, depending on the specific area. This is what we see in place today with its established uses and infrastructure. Looking at the future land use map, we can see the vision for how the area is intended to develop moving forward. The future land use takes place, takes into account anticipated growth, infrastructure availability, and the city's long-term goals. This plan outlines where higher-density residential, commercial, or mixed-use developments are expected to occur, helping to guide the city's growth in a sustainable and organized way. As we evaluate the proposed rezoning, we consider how the changes align with the future land use goals and how they support the community's broader objectives for balanced growth and development. This is the conceptual site plan for the 14.63 acre development with 70 lots and a central park. The plan includes two retention ponds for stormwater management and a single driveway that connects all the lots. This layout creates a balanced residential community with green space and efficient infrastructure while addressing the needs for workforce housing. One of the challenges discussed at the P&amp;Z meeting was the ability to have multiple entrances and exits to this long development. While we are not at that phase yet, the developers had had conversations with the adjoining property owners, and will be able to have a second exit at the end of the development opposite Highway 334. To summarize, the proposal is to rezone the property from B2 Business District and Ag, Agriculture, to R5 Single Family Detached Residential. This lots will allow for higher-density residential development consisting of 70 lots, a central park, and a necessary infrastructure while maintaining the city's commitment to sustainable growth and meeting housing demands. The purpose of this rezoning is to align with the current land use and create much-needed workforce housing for Gunbarrel City. It's also important to note that the property was annexed into Gunbarrel City limits, automatically is zoned to agriculture until it's rezoned. An emergency did come up with the 606 East Main Street team. They have attended each council and P&amp;Z meeting as requested, but I would be happy to answer any additional questions by council.
Questions for staff?
Can you go into a little bit more detail of what do they mean by there will be a second road? There's only a single road in there now. Are they proposing to buy property, or do we know anything about that?
The only thing that I can tell you on it is that they have been in contact with the people who own those lots that are behind them, so that they do have access to another road behind them.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I think, council, that will be hashed out more. So as you all know, these developments have a lot of phases, right? We annexed in property first. Tonight, we're rezoning property. The next step will be the preliminary plat. Following the preliminary plat will be the site plan, and then the final plat. So I think you will see more of those details as we get to the preliminary plat. But as Brittany mentioned, they did meet, since the P&amp;Z meeting, with the abutting property owner, and have worked out some arrangements to not only have one entrance and exit, to have a second entrance and exit at the end of the property. That property is owned by the school district that abuts them, and they are in the plans for building there. I believe it's third and fourth grade campus at that location. So there are a couple of different property owners there that are going to be able to work with them, including the city of Maybank, the school district, and some private property owners.
Further questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance number O-2025-003, rezoning tracts 17D1, 17D, and 17 in the GT Walter survey, A-794 in the city of Gunbarrel City, being described as all of called 14.63 acre tract of land, described indeed as 606 East Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, belonging to Rizvi Sayed Nasir Ali, from General Business District B2 and Agriculture AG to Single Family Detached Residential R5.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Burns, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes. Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 8C, a public hearing for a request for Hillsdale Development Group, LP, to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II, a 5.857 acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey. Abstract number 59 for 23 single-family lots and three open-space lots located in the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas. Now, I now open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on this? That's 8D.
They speak, mayor, they would speak during the public hearing item.
I'm just going by what is on the sheet, so we can now, okay. All right, so our first one would be Linda Rigo.
Hello. My name is Linda Rigo, and I represent 108 The Lee Way in Northwood Shores tonight. I've owned property on Lee Way, and my sister's owned property on Lee Way for approximately 20 years. We bought on Lee Way because of the quiet cul-de-sac and the charm and the friendly community. For many years, this has been our happy place. That is, until the developer purchased land next to Northwood Shores. The Coleman's, Shelley and Scott, have been kind enough to share with you some of the problems that we've endured over the period of time with the developer. The residents of Northwood Shores are asking that you totally reject Hillwood proposal tonight. Yes, reject. Following me, you'll hear from Jeremy Brown, a lawyer that we've hired to protect our community. Jeremy Brown is a real estate attorney with the law firm of Keating Brown in Dallas, Texas. Mr. Brown has litigated real estate disputes throughout the state for approximately 20 years, including dozens of disputes concerning restrictive covenants, easements, and other title rights. He's the co-author of Texas Title Insurance and a member of the Judiciary Committee of the Texas Land Title Association, which frequently submits America's briefs to the Texas Supreme Court in cases involving Texans' real property rights.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Jeremy Brown.
Good evening, council. My name is Jeremy Brown. I represent multiple homeowners in the Northwood Shores subdivision. I have prepared a written letter that I would like either each of you to read at your convenience that outlines and gives authorities, legal authorities, for the statements that I'm going to make here today. I realize that I've only got three minutes, so I have to move real quickly. So I represent multiple homeowners, Northwood Shores subdivision, and my clients asked the council to deny the approval of the Hillsdale Phase II plat for two primary reasons. First, it violates the rights of existing residents of Gunbarrel City, and it violates the Gunbarrel City ordinance relating to replats. The main objection that my clients have is to Lot 18, which is a lot adjacent to the, to the main development. It is a lot within the Northwood Shores subdivision. The Northwood Shores subdivision was platted in 1964. When it was platted, restrictions were adopted that governed the use of the lots within that subdivision. One of those restrictions requires that Lot 18 can only be used for residential purposes. The Texas Supreme Court has interpreted residential purposes to mean for living purposes. So it's obvious that in this proposed plat, the developer contemplates using as its secondary access point, Lot 18, Lot 18, for a driveway. That's using the Lot 18 for transportation purposes, not for living purposes. So it violates the existing restrictions that have been in place since 1964. Now, I'm aware that there's been some discussion of, that the developer has these rights because there is an, he claims he has an easement on Lot 18, and that's simply not true. The easement that the developer claims to have is in a 1981 deed, well after the vast majority of the lots in Northwood Shores were already sold. Once a developer sells lots in a subdivision that are encumbered by existing land restrictions, that developer has no ability to unilaterally amend, waive, or alter the restrictions in any way without the consent of the landowners. The landowners have never consented to any easement whatsoever, certainly not an easement that would allow the access to a 70-unit subdivision. So the authorities for my position are set forth in my letter. I asked the council to carefully review that letter, and I want to make it clear that my clients do not oppose the development. We're not anti-development, okay? We are anti-development that restricts and basically ignores the rights of other homeowners. And this developer has the ability to use a secondary access, to make a secondary access on Highway 189, and has just chosen not to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I now close the public hearing. 8D, a preliminary plat, consider and take action on a request from Hillsdale Development Group, LP, to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II, a 5.857 acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey, abstract number 59, for 23 single-family lots and three open-space lots located in the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas. Do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Yes. Brittany, would you like to speak to this?
I have a presentation.
Okay.
We send out a, public hearing notice was sent to the paper on December the 17th. Letters mailed to the property owners within 200 feet of the property on January the 7th. Public hearing notice was published in the paper for planning and zoning and city council meeting on January the 9th, which is at least 15 days prior to the city council meeting. The planning and zoning meeting was on January the 13th, and tonight is the regular city council meeting. Here we have a map of the location of the Hillsdale Phase II development. Here we have a map of the location of the Hillsdale Phase II development. As you can see, the site is located along Highway 198 in the J.P. Brown survey, abstract number 59. The zoning map shows that this tract is designated as R4, which is appropriate for the single-family residential development proposed. This zoning allows the developer to move forward with the planned residential community in line with the city's long-term goals for development in this area. This map helps to place the development within the broader city layout, providing a clear understanding of its location and how it fits into the surrounding area. This is the 200-foot boundary outlined in blue. The property is highlighted in yellow. I sent out eight letters and received zero in response. This is the preliminary plat for Phase II. This is a plan for the entire development, and Phase II is the south portion of the development. The applicant is requesting approval for the preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II, which is a 5.857 acre tract of land. This development will consist of 23 single-family residential lots and three open space lots. This also includes necessary infrastructure such as roads, utilities, and drainage systems. The approval of this preliminary plat is crucial as it ensures the development aligns with our city's regulations and sets the stage for future phases. While there have been discussions about this development in the past, what we're reviewing tonight is a new development plan. This plan is independent of previous versions and includes all necessary details for review. This property is located in the J.P. Brown survey and is currently undeveloped. It is zoned for residential use, and the plat complies with the city's zoning regulations. Additionally, the project will be a private gated community, offering added security and privacy for the future residents. Phase II of the Hillsdale development will include 23 single-family lots, three open space lots, designed with both residential and recreational spaces in mind. The community will be gated for security purposes. Gun Barrel City codes require a second emergency access for emergency vehicles for subdivisions in the city limits. This access would be provided via access easement on Lot 18 of the Northwood Shores subdivision. This entrance will only be used when needed by emergency vehicles such as fire trucks. The property is zoned R4, which is for single-family detached homes. Under this zoning, lots must be a minimum of 4,500 square feet, and the homes must be at least 1,450 square feet. The proposed development fits within these requirements, which is most lots exceeding the minimum area and width. This design is in line with the city's growth goals and helps maintain the integrity of residential neighborhoods. Tonight, Hillsdale Development is requesting approval of their preliminary plat. Staff is recommending conditional approval with the understanding that the listed exceptions must be resolved or formally requested during the site plan approval. The developer proposer proposes making all streets private, which will also require a clear documentation on the site plan for approval. If the city council approves the preliminary plat tonight, the next step will be to review the site plan. This plan will provide more detailed designs and address the requested exceptions. It's important to note that the site plan is where the finer details of the development will be worked out, especially regarding exceptions like emergency access and stormwater drainage. At this point, the city council has three options. One, to approve the preliminary plat as submitted. Two, approve the plat with conditions which would require specific actions to be taken before the final approval. Three, deny the plat with a clear explanation of the reasons for denial. Staff recommends the approval of their preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase II with conditions that the site plan fully complies with the city's codes of ordinances or that exceptions are granted. This approval will allow the project to move forward and ensure that it aligns with our development standards.
Questions for staff?
I have a question. On the handout that was given us, the replat area shows that Lot 18 is included. Is this your understanding that it would be included in this replat?
It's not including Lot 18 as the replat.
Why is it continued to be shown in every, the documents that we've received?
Because it would be used as a secondary access to the preliminary plat.
In this case, Council, and Mr. Mondo's here and can help answer those questions, it's not uncommon to show the surrounding area when you're looking at a plat. They have an abutting in the ETJ. The plat was approved by council and the ETJ for the two, for the two areas they own there to be replatted. So it's not uncommon on a preliminary plat for you to show, sorry I hit my mic, show surrounding areas. So you don't just have that one lot. You have the property above it, and the developer also owns Lot 18, and therefore it is shown on the plat as well.
So with the plat, so with the plat, would this lot be replatted into the replat? Is that what's being proposed?
It is not. The replat is specifically the 5.83 acre tract in the city limits. I believe the developer is also here to give a presentation, if y'all would like that to happen.
Please.
Hello. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. My name is Ian Hill from Hillsdale Development Group. First, I'd like to introduce others that are in attendance from Hillsdale Development Group. Blake Bassett, Jarrett Shope, and Tristan Poor from Spire's Engineering, and Rob Daiki is part of our legal counsel. All are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding our application for the preliminary plat for Phase II of our development. Over the last year or so, it's been a pleasure to meet with you all and get to know each one on the council, and the mayor, and Dr. Angie Smith, and the rest of the staff of Gun Barrel City. We know that you all are pretty familiar with this project, but for those that may not be, I prepared a brief background and a few slides to provide an overview of the development. The entire Hillsdale development site is 21 acres, which is a total of three separate parcels. 16 acres is outside of Gun Barrel City limits, and a little under six acres is inside of Gun Barrel City limits. Hillsdale's already plotted the 16-acre section into 47 single-family residential lots, which is in Phase I, and two commercial lots along 198 that we call Retail 1 and Retail 2. Today, we're asking the city council to approve our preliminary plat for the final six-acre portion into 23 single-family lots and three common areas. Phase II of the Hillsdale development is completely aligned with Gun Barrel City's comprehensive plan and the current R4 zoning of the site. This is fantastic because we're all on the same page as it relates to the use of this site. Hillsdale Development Team planned this development with features we call the perfected lakeside living. Now, what does that mean? We wanted to blend all of the best aspects of many different communities around the lake and others, and blend them together. The most important aspect was to create a master plan community that gives all the residents equal access to the lake in a variety of different ways and locations. A neighborhood with a wide range of home sizes and price points, attracting a diverse pool of residents that have the exact same passion, the lake life. In terms of our civil engineering and landscape architecture, our goal for Hillsdale may be best described as refined rural, a neighborhood that looks virtually the same as all the others around the lake and the neighborhoods nearest to Hillsdale, with an elevated design. What does that mean? Less concrete and rigid, non-pervious surfaces, more natural-looking spaces and experiences, native plants and grasses, low-maintenance objects, wide right-of-ways, grass ditches, and stone, brick, and natural pathways and boardwalks. As we move further in our site plan process and the city, with the city engineer, we hope that we can maintain some of these goals as much as possible. And along South Gun Barrel Lane, our plant, and Retail 1 and Retail 2, our plan is for a Class A retail and restaurant space so desperately needed in this area. We believe that the Hillsdale Shopping Center will be an anchor to create even more developments in this largely undeveloped part of Gun Barrel City. In addition to providing unlimited, the ultimate inconvenience for the residents of Hillsdale, the nearby neighborhoods of Tamarack, Northwood Shores, and Liquid Acres would also enjoy walkable access to these new establishments. I also have a few slides that you guys have probably been looking at already, so I guess up to the beginning, I'll just do some really quick things. The location, there's a location where the orange dot is where we are right now. The blue square is where the property is. There's some nice pictures of the site. The features, I guess you guys have been looking at that. So I guess maybe, let's go here. So in terms of the preliminary plat, I've, is that where we are? Yes. Okay. I mentioned the definitions of what the preliminary plat is. It's listed right there. In Section 155.51, the plans and specifications and compliance with these regulations, you know, typically, we just do a preliminary plat, and then once it's approved by the commission, then we move on to engineering and site plan. The next page, please. Those are, this is the plat requirement, Section 155.23, top to bottom. And I will take a moment just to kind of go through those steps. Now, in this presentation, the preliminary plat is very big, so it's almost impossible to highlight anything on this document. So what I've done is just zoomed into various things to show that we've complied with your list of requirements. A is outline of the tract. It's tracked, it's outlined in blue, and it's heavily drawn for easy identification. B is, you know, a plan showing streets and sidewalks, blocks, Block D, Lot 3, 10-foot building lots, roadways and ditches. C is the location and name of the existing streets. We've got Leeway. We've got natural things like the lake and waterways. D, the proposed names of the streets, highlighted there in blue, Hillsdale Drive and Twin Creeks. There's a lot of stuff on these, so you can see the names of the two streets that are in this part of our development. The location of existing sewer and fire hydrants, those are circled as well, so those are on the preliminary plat. F is a general plan for stormwater drainage, sufficiently detailed, so we've got the arrows in the direction of flow. We've got culverts, subterranean, and all the, the direction of the flow for the drainage. Zoning, we talked about that earlier, that it's zoned R4, and that's exactly what the lots are sized to. Of course, we got a north line, the scale, the name of the development, and the engineer's stamps, and date, and the vicinity sketch around, and the direction of the water flow in those vicinity sketches. K is the cross-section of the proposed streets and water and sewer marked on the both of those areas. The approximate acreage listed, and I think there's one more here, excuse me, and then topographical information in two-foot increments. So as you can see, all of the things required by your preliminary plat has been provided by our team, and we've meticulously followed your plan for the preliminary plat. We do expect that this will be approved without any delay or exceptions. The preliminary plat is an important step in the process of a site plan and final approval. In the coming days and weeks, we'll be presenting a site plan, which includes substantially more information for a rigorous review by your city engineer. And that's all that I have. Do you have any questions for me or anybody else here?
I have one question. It seems that I've looking at this and for all the, looking for all the exempt requests. I see a lot of them in there. It's always, we've had an issue with 155.40, and it's, we've had that numerous times, and we keep coming back to it, and developers and builders come in. Can you give me an explanation why we are having such a problem with it?
Well, there's a couple of things, and, you know, I can probably let some of our other team answer those, but, you know, we've kind of, we're trying to marry up Phase I and Phase II ideally was kind of our plan. So we've kind of moved forward with additional engineering and civil planning. We have just recently started working with the city engineer, and these are the first responses back. Generally, we wouldn't even even know this information at this point in time in our process as a city, because this is just a preliminary plat. This has some basic information about the site. Diving deeper, you know, in terms of the site plan and drainage planning, there are lots of different options. The one thing I would want to point out is our right-of-ways are 20% bigger than the city requires. There's really, and it's a very simple property, there's no reason whatsoever that we can't find a drainage plan that will work within your city's right-of-ways for this property. There's nothing special about it.
Thank you.
It's a special, it's a special property. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My name is Rob Daiki. I am a licensed civil engineer, as well as a land use and real estate attorney here in Texas as well. I just really wanted to make two points. The first one was, the nature of this project brings with it fairly high-value properties. I appreciate the tax structure in Gun Barrel City. I would just suggest for your consideration that the nature of these properties tends to bring folks that have expendable income, and that coupled with the retail property nearby, and those, that retail activity tends to spur additional, additional retail activity, I think is all to the benefit of the community. The other point I would make is really one on process. The plat is a function of the city's subdivision ordinance, whereas the site plan process is created by the zoning ordinance. And so the exceptions that you see in your, in your packet tonight, each and every one of those are related to the site plan process, and as Dr. Smith mentioned a while ago, as well as Ian, we will be back in front of this council with the site plan, either with requests for exceptions at that time, or we'll find a way to resolve those without the need for exceptions. But either way, our request would be a clean vote of approval on the plat this evening, because the city's not giving anything up at all. You still have all of your regulatory authority as it relates to those issues in the site plan. This is just on the plat, irrespective of these other engineering and access issues. Thank you.
Question?
Questions?
I might understand that any exceptions are not required to not, or would be required. I assume there's a conflicting opinion here.
Joe, as our city engineer, can you please get up and speak to what is required with the approval of the preliminary plat? It is important that, while Joe's coming to the microphone, every single city's code of ordinance is a little bit different. As part of the plat approval process, we do require developers to list the width of the street, to list with significant, I got a lesson from Joe, sufficiently detailed drainage plan, right? It says a general drainage plan that is sufficiently detailed. We rely on our engineer to look at those and say, is this going to work? Does this meet our codes? Joe, as our engineer's job is to say, yes, it does, or no, it doesn't. And in this case, we currently have two things that Joe does not believe would meet if it went forward as it is and became a part of the site plan. Mr. Mondo?
Excuse me. Good evening. Not to correct the city manager, but we don't require-
It's okay. People do it all the time.
-any of this. Your code of ordinances is written such that it requires everything that we're talking about. In the Gun Barrel City code of ordinances, the plat process has- In the Gunbarrel City Code of Ordinances, the plat process has virtually all of the, we'll use the language, civil engineering requirements that the site plan process has. You might consider it duplicative, but nonetheless, that's the way it's written. The plat process grants an entitlement to that property owner that submits and requests the approval of the plat. So simply stated, to grant a plat approval for something that you know doesn't meet your ordinances, but it's going to be taken care of later, is not a, it's not an approach that certainly we'd recommend and probably not an approach that any of you would recommend in your own personal business. The plat process is there, the requirements are there. We list those items in the plat submittal that are not consistent with your ordinance. The, the discussion is that those details will be worked out in the site plan by one measure or another. So the logical step forward is to approve the plat with those conditions, the conditions that those things that need worked out will in fact get worked out. You know, whatever the language ends up being, variances, exceptions, whatever, that's, that's not the case, that's not the issue. If you don't identify the exceptions, you have approved a plat exactly as shown. And, you know, you go in the site plan process and if, if I'm representing that, that developer and the city tells me, well, we don't, you know, we want this changed, I would say, but I have a plat approved that shows that. And that's called, that's the entitlement concern. So what's being recommended by the city manager is completely logical. You know, there's issues there, they can either get worked out now or you can approve the plat conditionally and work them out in the site plan process, which deals at a more detailed depth with all of those sorts of issues.
Oh, those would be listed upfront and that's what the staff have done, is that correct?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
So, in accordance with what you're saying, we've, we've seen a list of exceptions that staff are recommending and that's after review of this plat request versus our ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Can, can only staff add recommendations or can council members add recommendations?
Absolutely. The, the, each one of the non-conformance items with your ordinance are listed. Now granted, you know, there are numbers and they refer to paragraphs and those paragraphs will put you to sleep when you try to read them, but they, they can all be explained in detail to council. Ultimately, council makes the decision, so you can, you know, you can deliberate till you understand what those mean and whether, whether you want to enforce them in kind, whether you want to grant a variance, there's a process called the variance. You know, it lists the requirements right in your plat, in your plat ordinance, there's a process for the variance, what, what the conditions typically are for you to grant a variance.
I think it is important to note that the, the exceptions that you have in front of you tonight came directly from the engineer that represents the city. So those aren't staff recommendations, they are, what, I think what they're talking about, Joe, is as we talked about, I gave you three options, approve and how that would look, approve with conditions and how that would look, and deny, and what you would need to do. Those potential exceptions, and Hillsdale isn't wrong, they have plenty of right-of-way to do a 30-foot street and do exactly what is in our code. They are going for a different look, so that is why they are thinking narrower streets, wider ditches, drainage a little different, but what, what is in, what staff is recommending is not just something staff pulled out of the air. Those are actually a part of our plating process that the engineer has found not to be in compliance with the preliminary plat.
Well, the plan that we're looking at here now for access for fire, there's one given, I guess the main entrance, and the other is being proposed to use the Northwood Shores entrance.
And that would come as a part of the site plan, that actual second?
Yeah, that's not a part of the preliminary plat.
Right, but, but, well, it's part of the site plan, once again, it gets back to the, to the, the whole context of a plat. And how do you approve a plat that doesn't meet your fire code? So the reason for showing the perimeters, as city manager said, with the, where the access points are, whether they're part of the area being plotted or not is not important, but it shows where they will be. And so you have a basis, you, in, in, in considering the plat, you have a basis for, for have you met the fire code or not. Fire codes are typically codes that most folks don't want to bury. Those are pretty, those are the things you want to just sort of make sure it complies and, and leave them alone.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mondo, but on this preliminary plat, Lot 18 is not included in this, is that correct?
It is not included to be plotted.
Just for the preliminary plat purposes.
I believe it is shown as a, as an access point.
Right.
There's, there's also a location shown in the upper left-hand area of the sheet on State Highway 198 as an access point.
Can we get any input from the other attorney here on that matter?
Yes, I would just want to point out that I think what's being made here respectfully-
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we can do that. I will share the letter that we got with the city attorney.
That's not appropriate this time. We can visit with you later.
Well, I think it is very important because this is a bone of contention between parties and the council's sort of caught in the middle of it. I'd like to hear both sides, any side of the question that we can, as to why the Hillsdale thinks this can be used, that this is a very important issue for us.
This lot is not part of the preliminary plat. And that is a conversation that the attorney for Hillsdale and the attorney for the neighborhoods on Northwood Shores will have to have, not in our public meeting under our agenda item because this lot is not part of the lots being plotted as part of the preliminary plat.
As a point of order, we have done this in the past, we go down these rabbit holes. We just need to want to stick to the verbiage as it is written. I will read it again. "We will consider and take action on a request from Hillsdale Development Group LP to approve a preliminary plat for Hillsdale Phase Two, a 5.857 acre tract situated in the JP Brown survey, abstract number 59 for 23 single-family lots and three open space lots located in the city of Gunbarrel City, Texas." We will have time for all of that later when we get to a site plan. We are just dealing with, I just want us to stay, stay on track. We are just dealing with the preliminary plat. Am I correct, Mr. Mondo, am I missing the vote here?
You're correct, sir.
Thank you. Okay, sir, you're out of order. You can't speak, you can't, you're out of order. You're out of order. It's also important that we maintain some type of order in here and I will ask if you cannot maintain order, that would ask you to leave. Are we understood? Thank you. Any other further discussion? If none, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat conditioned, provided the code of ordinance 1.155.23A2F and 155.23A2C are met or variances are granted.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Jacob's second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion, a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacob's yes.
Boss, yes.
Motion passes. This time, I would like to thank everybody for coming, drive safe. This meeting is now adjourned.